...the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, we have everybody here, welcome back then.
Thank you.
Glad you're taking your time as well. And assuming everybody has the opportunity to read the agenda. We did have one addition, we did have to put, we were missing one of our invoices from our city attorney in the packet. So we have added that. Any questions on the agenda? Okay, we need to adopt the agenda as well as our consent agenda and minutes from the last meeting. Do I have a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and we need to do the consent agenda.
Good, thank you. I did have a question on that.
Okay.
But, for now, okay. Just had a question about the E F T payroll liabilities, and maybe Mary can help me out. The ones for this month, I'll add it up with the check register. Last month we had a liability of ten thousand seven oh five. So that's about a six thousand dollar difference. Why were they so high last month? Were you? Past due or something? Yeah. And I looked at the check register and I didn't see those checks adding up to that, so that's why I'm curious. Maybe it's something you can...
You know, I'm gonna have to look, I didn't, so, on the E F T payroll.
Right, right.
Comparison from February to March?
Yeah, well, our last meeting in March, we had liabilities of ten thousand seven oh five. And tonight's packet is forty one fifteen, so that's quite a big difference. And I didn't see any checks in the check register from the previous meetings that added up to that.
I'll have to take a look, Troy. The only thing I can think of is if it's the quarter lease.
Okay.
To do the quarter lease right away, so that might be included, but I'll take a look.
Okay, thank you.
Can we agree to approve the consent agenda per getting that information from Mary?
Yes.
Yeah. Can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, approval of minutes from the last meeting.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Did you not approve the consent agenda from last meeting?
Well, thanks for reminding me. We did not, we did not, we just did the minutes and we did not, so. From two meetings ago, we need to approve the consent agenda.
What's the date on that?
Is it the twenty seventh?
Twenty seventh.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Troy seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's prove last meeting's minutes. I'm assuming everybody had a chance to look at it, did anybody have any questions or anything they wanted to update in the minutes? Okay, I need a motion to adopt the minutes from last meeting.
Can I ask a procedural? Go ahead, make the motion, I have a question.
Yeah. I just need a second.
Okay.
Who made the motion?
Larry.
Larry.
Troy.
Okay.
So, if I wasn't at a meeting, I can't really approve the minutes? My feeling is I should abstain. So should I voice that if I want to abstain? Or wait for you to ask if you're... I don't know what the rules of order would call for.
Trent.
He was looking at his script. No, the answer is you can in fact approve them if you choose to, but it's very common practice, you know, in situations where a council member is not present to ask to abstain on that basis.
Okay.
So you can do either way, you're not making a mistake if you vote to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the minutes? Okay. We got a second, so all in favor of passing the minutes from the last meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I will abstain.
All right, we can move on to our public forum, we have one person tonight, Deb, would you like to join us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Dear T F, City Council members and mayor of my state, we'd like to...
There you go.
Thank you for continuing the practice of public forums and allowing me to speak tonight. I realize that the recent resolution had three council members favoring its passage and two members opposed. I would like to speak to those three who supported this resolution on March twenty seventh. I come not to speak on the merits of the state or federal guidelines, mandates, statutes, or laws regarding vaccines, mask wearing, smoking indoors, speed limits, or drinking and driving. We all know that a local city government does not have the authority to impose nor restrict such requirements, making the previous resolution null and void, whereas our new city attorney called it without due. I want to speak at length on the obvious political nature of this resolution. We saw the division it caused among opposing viewpoints at the last meeting and have since learned that the resolution was based on proposed Republican templates in Texas and at the national GOP level. The lack of non-partisanship speaks for itself. What I will do is speak to perceived intent and representation. No matter how much I disagree with the verbiage and resulting pretext of the resolution, I'll go once again to the wisest and kindest person I've personally ever known, my mom, Kathy Jewell. She taught me to consider good intentions and see the best in others. Taking her wisdom into consideration, I realize that the intent of your resolution was good. You believed in the words and that it was best for our community. I cannot, nor should I, ever second guess the motives of others. Most people have love in their hearts for one another, and I have no reason to believe otherwise in this case. To say that, to that I say, thank you for caring and believing that what you want for your families is what's best for others. Now, as to representation. When you ran for city office, I heard that you would favor transparency and speak for your whole community. The citizens of Taylor's Falls, with a few exceptions, were not made aware of the proposed resolution ahead of time and were not asked for our input. We all live in our own little circles, surrounded by life-thinking individuals, and you may therefore not have been aware of differing viewpoints. As it turns out, the position and most certainly the reaction to the resolution was for the most part pretty negative. If you consider your oath to follow the laws of our state and still represent the concerns of our community, then you should be convinced of our community stance. It was suggested by a speaker at the last public forum that placing the question of the resolution on a referendum to ensure what our community wants as policies that speak to the nature of our city. That sounded incredibly reasonable to me. I will leave you with a few questions to ponder. Number one, after hearing from so many of our neighbors who vehemently oppose this resolution, will you consider rescinding it? Number two, will you strive to know the wishes of all your constituents before making the decision to stick with this resolution or passing others? Number three, will you consider addressing questions or providing feedback to the public forum concerning concerns during the roundtable discussion? And number four, going forward, will you, as our councils have in the past, leave your political views out the door to City Hall and focus on the work of a local council, the job of keeping our city running smoothly? Again, thank you for allowing me this time. And I just haven't tried out those questions if anybody wanted to... May I approach the venue?
Thank you, Deb. All right, that was our only person that filled out any public forum sheet today, so let's move on to old business. We put some of this stuff on old business because we haven't resolved it yet, so we might not have anything in the packet yet, but we're going to keep it on old business until we as a council decide to take it off or we resolve what we're doing. So the first thing we have on here is the Shaffer Fire contract update. I know we were working on it, so Troy, do you have any update for us?
Basically the same update as the twenty seventh of March. The contract went back a draft a bit with the adjusted amounts, it was about six thousand dollars less. I did contact or reach out to Faith, Liz McClurg at Shaffer Township. I was going to say, probably last Thursday or Friday, just sent, shot off an email to her, ask her if she's got any more information, because I had a meeting tonight and she didn't have anything, so. We are going forward, it looks good, but I will wait until the next Shaffer Township meeting and hopefully they'll have a resolution, if they're going to accept it or not.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Troy?
How often do they meet?
Monthly, from what I understand, monthly. I did ask when I emailed Faith when they were meeting, and I haven't gotten that from, heard that from her yet, so. Probably a week or two.
Maybe the second Monday of each, second Thursday of each month.
Okay. So that would be this Thursday, and I'll be in a adjuster's evaluation meeting.
Okay, let's move on to the second number under old business, it'd be the city coordinator and zoning and zoning screen update. Larry and I have some exciting news, we actually did have an opportunity to interview a gentleman this last Friday. And it was a very great, just get to know, you know, very low key, we didn't do a hardcore interview with this gentleman, we wanted to see what we thought, and we're excited.
We agree that he would be a great potential candidate for the position. Local fellow, Wisconsin. And we're going to take it, I think, another step further, just to delve into his experience a little bit more. So it's good news, it's, you know, a person that stepped up and seems to fit the bill, so we need to take a closer look at it.
We did, oh, I should say, I had Mary send everybody the applicant, or the applicant's resume today, so the rest of the council could see it. We did get it before the meeting, otherwise we'd have added the packet, maybe we could have done something a little faster, so. I'm going to be very busy the next week and a half, so we're trying to figure out how everybody can meet with this gentleman without violating any open meeting laws and continuing forward so that we don't miss this opportunity if he is right for us, so.
We did get another application.
Yeah, yeah. Everything kind of lit up all of a sudden, we got one, we were excited, then we got a second one over the weekend, and so we need to reach out to her and set up a time to meet with her as well, so. And then we did get another one that was a really great application, but I don't know what position yet, so we're going to hold it in our file. But yeah, the floodgates open, so people are looking for work evidently, so we're getting some nice people in there.
We're going to have choices.
Any questions for us? Not a lot to discuss, hopefully we can figure out how to get them and the rest of them in, so we can keep on moving.
Yeah, the resume did look good, it was impressive.
All right, old business, number three would be the website update. We did get another two quotes for our website help, one was from Bolton Mink. They had two options, one to help us with the current website that we already have in the background, and then we have, also, they could help us build a brand new one. We have, the one that was on the table from Becky Kennedy, and then we also have one from another customer from the League of Minnesota that gave us an advocate, or to work with what we have or develop any one too. Both the other quotes were in the eight thousand dollar range, one was in the six thousand for Bolton Mink, I believe. Which...
Seven change.
Seven change.
And an annual fee.
Yeah, and the annual fee was...
Seven.
Yeah.
Seventy.
Seventy eight, yeah. So. Any questions? We had one other person that didn't have, Mr. Mondale's company didn't return any of my calls, so these are the three quotes we have, and I guess I'm looking to see if we can move forward and make a decision then, so we can get a website up and running.
So. Just, I have a question on the, not the Bolton and Mink one, but the eighty two S communications.
Yep.
It looks like they've got two different schedules here of fees, and I don't know what the difference is between the two. I read through it and...
Almost kind of different. They are the same, he double put them in, depending on if we, for some weird reason, they did just give us one list of fees. They put the list behind, if they built us a website, they put the same fees behind if they were to just work with the website that we already have. I didn't see a difference at all. And he did say that the eighty three nineteen would be the max that they would charge. Unless, unless they needed to come to us for more money.
Unless it's not enough.
Yeah. So. Yeah, it got me confused, I had to like, I held them up, I said, Joe, I bring them out, because I'm like, why are you doubling up? But that's what they did. And they do offer a lot of other services, you can see, and it's just websites, so. Good to have, I mean, another person to go to for different things, for zoning or whatnot.
There's different quotes on this chart that I'm looking at here. There's one, says open to table. Yeah, it says two or three, and then, and that quote is like eighty one, hold on, eighty one seventy. Eighty one seventy eight, and then the other one's for like eighty three and change. Hold on.
Yeah.
So they're not the same.
The fees give us the same, it's not, so one is, the most expensive one was to build a whole new site, and then the one to work with our staff and basically what they want to do, and they came out and said they don't want to work with the site that we have, but they gave us the option. And that would be working with Mary and Michelle and whoever else is in here. They want a go-to person, one-on-one, so they wouldn't have to come to us for everything. But there's not a huge price difference to neither of them.
Right. Okay, thanks.
I think...
They're not, oh, sorry.
No, that's okay, I think, is this Bolton and Mink, or, there's a Gov. Dot Office series of sheets in here. And I think I understand what Mary's saying, because I do have a fee summary of eighty three sixty four under the City of Taylor's Falls, Minnesota website development. Now is that Bolton and Mink? Or is that, is that Gov. Dot Go Office?
Eighty three sixty four was from Bolton and Mink, that's option one.
Got it, thank you. So those are our options.
And both Bolton and Mink and eighty two S kind of do the same. Work with what we have or developing a review. One thing that Bolton did share with us is that they have never built a website for a city yet, so we would be the first one that they haven't done. Not that they can't do it, they do separate sites, but the whole interactive site they haven't done yet, so. And that was discussed with Tim and myself, and some people were in that, so.
What was the price from Becky Kennedy?
I do have that up, so we, for Becky Kennedy, it was thirty nine hundred for the web development and design, and then basic, for basic monthly maintenance of a hundred, annual hosting one eighty, so initial cost looks like four thousand one eighty. I found that somewhere here, okay. So that's what, that's what we're looking at with well-optimized web. So we've got two estimates over eight thousand, and we've got one at forty one eighty. And nothing from the Mondale.
They didn't respond, so I'm guessing that they decided that they're too busy. I guess, that's what we have. Any thoughts?
Becky sure seemed to understand what her needs were, and she sat in with us that first morning, I think, all morning with us, and reviewed the training, and I felt comfortable with her comments and recommendations. And she knows the community.
Price is right.
And the price paid.
I'd like to see her want to stay here in the community.
I agree, I think there's other opportunities for Bolton and Mink, probably in the future with planning documents and ordinances and things, so.
Yeah, I agree, you know, just a rundown too on the existing site, I just don't feel with the... I don't think we could all even sit here and figure out how to get it together, so that's why we were kind of leaning towards getting a new website instead of dealing with, well, we've already spent money on it, I get that. Unfortunately, we can't get that back, but, you know, moving forward, we can have somebody here that can help us. I mean, I could probably fumble our way through it, but it wouldn't look good, and it's a full-time job right now to get it up and running.
So with Becky's proposal was not in the meeting, would that be a complete build-out again, away from what we had and then just starting brand new?
Yeah, yeah, so we would just shut down Gov. Office altogether and move over to...
The other two that we had from, the one from Bolton and Mink and then that eighty two S, they both alluded to the fact that it's not, either way they do it, it's not tremendously user-friendly. I mean, that means a lot of work and a lot of training, so is it the same case for Becky's, or is it, I mean, is it more user-friendly than what the other two are alluding to?
Yes, it is, she's doing WordPress, which just about anybody in here could learn within about thirty minutes. Not downgrading what Becky does, but I've worked with websites for like the last, we had two different ones at my company, and I was asking her what they were currently using, and yeah, that's a hot mess, so.
And she indicated there were way too many clicks to make anything happen with our current one, so she's aware of the fact that we need something more efficient than what we currently have.
Yeah, I think that she could build it, probably, most likely she could build it within thirty days, get it up and running and train Michelle and Mary. And then anything else, I'm guessing, whatever retainer you're giving her, if you wanted to send her information to update, you could, but they should be able to learn how to use it.
It looks like what the basic monthly maintenance she will be there, you know, doing backups and content updates she listed, so she can help us with that. And we can always relook at that, I suppose, if we get things going. So. I, well, we need a motion and a second to vote, we can, we have three choices, so.
Well, I guess if I can, I would like to make a motion to hire a well-optimized web at this point to build our website and maintain it going forward. An initial cost of forty one eighty, within the annual hosting and basic monthly maintenance are there as well, one eighty and one hundred. So I would like to make that motion that we hire a well-optimized web.
I would second that.
Okay. We have a second, all those in favor of hiring a well-optimized web, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
She's outside, should we go grab her? Tell her.
All right, exciting.
That's a nice tip.
It's very exciting.
Okay, well, our next one, we have community garden listed under old business, we don't have a lot, but we kept it on there because our friend Jim is going to be here with us from our insurance, and we're going to ask him some questions about that. I think he knew it was coming, so if you want to come on up, we're just going to skip right over that and go right into the new emergency go, so come on up.
All right, thank you. I'll start at the beginning of my proposal for the renewal, and we'll spend some time in the live over section, because really, that's a section that generates more questions than any other, so. The insurance was up for renewal on March first for the coverage placed with the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, and this is a program designed for Minnesota cities. They have a number of unique features within their insurance program, and I will get into weeds with as much detail as you like, if you want, but as we're going through here, any questions, just let me know. We do have a breakdown of each property location, each vehicle, and the associated insurance costs. The total insurance value at replacement cost is a rule over ten point eight, and while the breakdown does show the value for each location, it's the league's intent that you get full replacement cost should something go wrong. So they have measured the buildings, they've done their best effort to make sure that we have the adequate insurance costs for each location, but should those values be incorrect, they will pay up to fifty percent more to make sure that the city is made whole in case something goes wrong. So while it does have a specific value later on in the proposal, don't get too hung up on that, the league, their intent is to make sure that we get replacement cost coverage in case something goes wrong with the city's property. Valuable papers are included in any property and contents. Mobile equipment for the city, the fire department, is automatically included. We are required to schedule any individual piece of the equipment that's valued over a hundred thousand dollars, and we have none. Trucks are separate from that, that's another scheduling again. The machinery coverage says that we also cover mechanical breakdown for the same property values and locations. Faithful performance bond, up to two hundred and fifty thousand, covering the monies that is handled by city employees, and, or property for that matter. The general liability has various maximum limits depending on what coverage section that you're looking at. You should be aware that the state of Minnesota has a statute that limits the city's responsibilities to three hundred thousand dollars for anyone claiming. One of the things I'm going to ask from this council before we adjourn today is that you agreed to not waive that statutory immunity, because that is one of your options. I have never had a city waive that immunity. If you decide to do that, it does cause, it causes insurance costs to rise. The general liability will go up an additional ten percent. Like I say, I've never, I've never had a city just say, we want to spend the money, so. It's important to note that the insured on this is the city of Taylor's Falls. Over the years, I've received many questions, you know, what happens down to the community center if somebody hurts themselves on the guard, on the handrail that goes down the steps? You know, the program is designed to set up, to cover the city's responsibilities for all locations and all injuries that the city has named in a suit for. It's not unusual for somebody to come and want to hold an event on city property, and they would love to attach themselves to the city's insurance, depending on what they're asking for, and I think that's going to be one of the question sets popping up here in a little bit. We cover the city of Taylor's Falls, we cannot cover any other organization or individual. So when people ask, you know, can we get insurance through the city, the city's insured. You know, if somebody wants to hold an event on city property, they're going to be responsible for themselves. Vehicle coverage, two million dollars living liability. Again, the statutory immunity at three hundred thousand dollars is set in place, we do have a two hundred and fifty dollar deductible on all property and vehicle schedules. The liability includes public officials, errors and omissions as you make your decisions. Workers' compensation is based on... Workers' compensation is based on Minnesota statute. We do cover defense for violations of open media law.
Jim, I got a quick question if I can. Can you elaborate on the, just 'cause I'm curious, it was a time to ask, right? Public officials, errors and omissions. What are you insuring there? Some examples?
I'm happy to say I've been involved in reasonably few suits in that area. Whenever somebody alleges an inappropriate action by the council, they can bring suit for it and we're going to defend it for it. That's really big.
I would think if we're required, there, there are timeline requirements for development, for example. We failed to meet those timelines, that I would assume a developer could file suit against us. So that might be one for our error and omission and not... I can't think of too many others, though.
Very rare to have a suit in this area. If you ever are fortunate enough to have one, you'd be very, very thankful to have this guy.
Thank you.
From, from an insurance cost standpoint, certainly the storms that have been hitting Minnesota and the upper Midwest have had their effect. And, and you see that as a breakdown between last year and this year, just to compare the two. The, the liability is, is pretty static. The workers' compensation looks like it went up a bunch, but it really did not. The workers' compensation, what we do is, you can tell the league how much payroll we expect to have in each category. And as the year completes, they do an audit and there's an adjustment, an audit adjustment based on what your actual payroll was. For whatever reason, last year was under projected and so it developed a lower grieving. When the audit was completed for last year, it developed an additional thirty-four hundred and forty-five dollars. So while the workers' compensation looks like it went up a lot, it did not. And the rates themselves per hundred dollars payroll remained very steady. I do, most years, offer whatever it costs to add another million dollar as excess liability. And you might ask why we need that. We have a statutory limit at three hundred thousand. We already have adequate, you know, very substantial limits under the general liability and the vehicle coverage. If the city were ever sued for something that could end up in federal court, the federal court would never acknowledge the immunity that is afforded under the Minnesota statute. And there has been some thought in the past, not so much lately, that if the right lawsuit was brought up, that they would break the statute. But it's really held pretty well. There's been some very difficult things that have happened around the state over the years, but it, it has held very well.
Just thinking about deductibles and as I already said, two fifty, I sold insurance when I got out of college for five years for a state farm. Or farmers. I know like in the personal insurance, the higher deductible lower goes. I mean, why are we so, I mean, could we raise it? Is it gonna make a huge difference in the state?
We, we didn't look at it this year. We have in years past and the, the give back for a higher deductible has been very marginal. And that's why it's been, been kept that way. They, they put the deductibles based on city population and the lowest deductible they offer is two hundred and fifty. Kewas Falls is a, is a really small city. That's the way to spend. If you are that interested, I get certified on.
I think you're right. I was just curious, 'cause I, I know if you play around with it sometimes, it makes a huge difference in some instances, but. I didn't know how it was calculated, so.
Thank you. I do have a typo on here. Because we do have this additional insured jack cream on. I think no longer doing this anymore, so I'll leave that date here. So you're proposing a, a municipal garden?
Ken, while we're on the policy, can I ask just a couple of questions?
Oh, yeah.
I'm on the Lions Club, Troy is on the Lions Club, and I noticed parks are, the city parks that the Lions Club maintains and helps support are covered under the city policy. A couple of years ago, we got a new dock, landing dock from the DNR with park DNR funds. And was it last year? Time flies. We installed a fishing pier. Value of that was somewhere around twelve thousand dollars. And I didn't see them on the ledger here. I'm not sure any of our Lions members knew we should report those kind of things. So, but I see everything else itemized here. Are those two items that should be on?
This would be very time to tell me.
Okay. Or, or two weeks ago?
Right, right. So are you saying twelve thousand for the both or each or?
I don't know what the DNR, DNR dock was. I can get you the exact price on the fishing pier, 'cause we did some fundraising for that.
Sure.
And there were some park improvements that the DNR helped with some grants and that was a number of years ago. We can probably find out what that was too. So we can probably just get in touch with you with those numbers?
Absolutely. There are some special provisions for everything that's bought or born. You know, as far as, I think my email address is on. But sure, let me know what the dock and pier, give me as good a description as you can, maybe the dimensions, a value, and I will certainly get back to Mary and, and let you know. The insurance costs will be marginal. So, and if we have twelve thousand dollars in value or so, we certainly should include that in the city's insurance program.
And then we've never submitted any claims. We just fix it. So we might have to change our practice there. But we had, a couple of years ago, we did have a, a large limb come off a tree and took out our electric pole. Would that be something in the north, north part?
Did it take it off of the building?
It, it took off, off the power, power slash light pole. And evidently, we have some liability involved with the issue. It's not Excel.
Oh, you, you mean you had to pay for the cost to repair? Right. And, you know, a, a city has a lot of property around. You have streetlights. You, you have things all over the city and you have to decide when something rises, when the value of something rises, screw point where you wanna pay specific attention to the insurance. If you have a building with an electric service on there, a limb falls and rips that electric service off the building, that's part of the building, it's covered. You take a hundred feet away where there's some power lines strung and a limb takes it down, it's just part of the, I guess. But that, that wouldn't be an insurance claim unless, you know, cities can list all their light poles. I mean, they, they can go as far along this line as they, as they wish. Kewas Falls has never done it and I've never seen any other city do that.
Okay, thank you. So we'll get you that information.
Perfect. I, I made myself a note to the law. Did I handle, you said some questions? Did we give it about?
Those were the two, yes. Thanks.
I did mention that we need to have a resolution where we agree to not waive the statutory immunity. I have a copy of the form and I have to show the, the day of the council meeting and have to get somebody's signature on this. Any questions on the resolution or why we need it and why it's important enough to get another guy?
What, do you need a motion?
I, I, we do need to have a motion.
Okay.
Was that Mr. Mayor?
It wasn't. Well, I, I don't think so.
President?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to echo what you said. It's standard. I've never been in a city that's ever wanted to have a great liability. I suppose I could come up with some nightmarish scenario where a city would, but I'm guessing that that is also the standard resolution for him and that the league has. Did you get that through?
I, I have that right here. Yes, I, I do and I.
I could certainly recommend that you, you pass that on even sight unseen, because it is, it is the standard language that you will want. And, and if you don't have that in place, then you're deemed to, to not have accepted the liability limits and that will cost you more money and more waste of money.
Sure.
So do we know the verbiage of the motion?
Mr. Mayor, you need your own resolution number, but the language is standard language.
Yeah.
I could certainly represent that it is whatever other city I've represented has passed.
If I didn't include it, I'd say I should.
I got it here. I'll, I'll get it to you. We can put a resolution number on it.
We can do the resolution number now. It's twenty twenty-three dash oh four dash zero zero.
All right, so I need a motion to accept the liability coverage waiver form. Do I have a second?
I got it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Who a second?
Did we have questions specific to the proposed community garden?
Ken, one, do we need to make a motion, have a vote on accepting or rejecting the hundred, that million dollar excess policy as well?
Yeah, we need to accept her. We need a motion to accept the insurance for the year two, I suppose, but. The garden? So we have, we'll do that. Remind me. As far as the community garden goes, I mean, I think we've all said that we're proponents of it. We're just trying to figure out where it goes. And so the location that has been brought to us was over at our, it's not a compost, it's just a brush pile. We all refer to it as compost, but it really isn't. Cities can't have compost sites. But that's where, it was brought to our attention that it'd be a great place, 'cause then they can, you know, throw what they don't need over there in the brush pile or whatever. It's by the holding ponds where it's not fenced. We were told that probably not a good idea from the state Environmental Protection Agency. We're still digging into that, but what do you recommend? I mean, we wanna make sure that the city is...
The city, if the city gets sued over the use of the community garden, we will defend you and we have adequate limits to take care of that. On the other side of that coin is, is proven risk management says that you take care of your responsibilities as best you can. If you see something that is obviously dangerous, you shouldn't do that. Whether a fence will take care of it or another location will be more appropriate, I don't know. But if the city decides to move forward with it, the insurance is in fine order, so.
Well, so far, it, it's only been proposed by a, a private citizens group. The city has not blessed us yet. So what are the ramifications of, of a private citizens group wanting to put something on city property?
Well, like I say, the, the city has insurance. If somebody gets hurt there, you'll, we'll ask a bunch of questions. We'll, we'll get a adjuster on it from the league and, and we'll, we'll take it from there to see what the responsibility is by. If you know something to be dangerous, then you shouldn't do it. Cities are often asked for a whole array of things. You have all kinds of property in different locations. There are some things where you wanna be just purely good to your citizens, for example, like it's a community garden. If somebody wants to have a demolition derby, well, maybe not so much. And, and when that happens, you say, well, sure, we'll let you use our property. But we wanna see a certificate of liability insurance proving that you're responsible for yourself. And by the way, we wanna be named as an additional insured, because if we get sued for something that you did, we want protection through your insurance. And that's, again, good risk management practice.
So by default, it would be our garden and we would let community members use it.
It was perfect.
Yeah, please.
I can, there, there's an exception to liabilities. I'm sure you're aware for any park or recreational area. And I think when he was talking about allowing dangerous condition to occur, they have what they call the attractive nuisance. So you could say, well, it's ours, we've got immunity, it's, you know, it's public use, it's recreational use. But if you're aware or reasonably aware that it's close to attracting nuisance, for example, a pond, you could be found to have additional liability in those kinds of cases. And I think that's what I heard sort of being said here and that's, that's the issue. So if you've got a, a garden, community garden, that would be a recreational area and, and at least I'd interpret it to be that way. And I expect the league would probably vigorously support that idea, but so you don't have to worry about it, it creating additional liability, I guess is what I'm saying, as long as you're, you're not putting it next to a, an attractive nuisance. Which could be defined as something, for example, a little kid might want.
Even if the decision to put a community garden where there's some fall hazard or what have you, the insurance still covers poor decisions. So, so, you know, if you decide to go that way, the insurance will take care of you. Over time, as insurance claims accumulate, that does keep reflecting on page five.
I think that answers our questions.
And again, we're just trying to help them, you know, do it correctly, so we don't have to make a big effort every time, you know, so. And we want everybody to be safe. We don't need anybody going swimming in the ponds. Certainly I'd like to try to create additional management. Any other questions?
Okay.
We need to do two. We need to vote twice here. We need to vote on increasing our million dollar liability.
Or not.
Or not. And then we need a motion to approve this year's insurance, so. We need a motion and a second on the liability. We can discuss that and then vote if we wanna do that round first.
I'll make a motion to reject the optional court for the one million dollar excess policy for, at a total of one thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We can discuss.
Yeah, I just wanna.
Who's second?
There you go.
So this will be a, a yea vote is a rejection. I just wanna make that clear.
Yes. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of rejecting? Say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now we need a motion to accept the insurance for this year.
So I'll make a separate motion to accept the total premium for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four period of fifty thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars. Make a motion to accept that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
As you're going through city business, if there are any questions along the way, I hope you all have my number and I can discuss whatever is on your shoulder at the time.
Thank you so much, Jim. I appreciate it.
Am I able to get that signed?
Do we need a copy of that or is that?
I'll, I'll be happy to send, I'll, I'll send one there.
Perfect. Anything else?
I don't think you.
I sure appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
All right, next on your business would be the Juneteenth paid holiday. It is in your packet. We're kinda getting a jump on things here on Ask Mary to add this to the, the packet for us to discuss as a council. I don't believe it's been passed yet, so I was having to look at it, but it's being considered, so I thought we might as well discuss it and decide if we wanted to include that as a holiday for the city of Kewas Falls.
And just to clarify, the state has approved the holiday starting in twenty twenty-four. And the period, the, the decision that's going through the legislative process now is whether to preempt that and start it this year, correct?
That's right.
I believe it's August of twenty-three, but yes, it would be after. Yep, okay. The federal government has already passed that one as well.
Oh, they did.
They have already.
Okay. So doesn't, doesn't offend, I mean, this is just one ally and then.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, I think you can pass it as, can be an unpaid holiday. That would kinda go against everything else that the state does, so. Every, every other office is closed during the state, Minnesota, of Minnesota and the federal government would be closed on those days, so.
So what is the, is it June nineteenth, the actual day of the holiday? Or is it, did you say it was August something here?
No, it's June nineteenth.
Okay, all right.
The federal government has already passed it. The state as of August first of twenty twenty-three, going forward, it will be a state holiday, so.
So we're just, we're discussing whether we should.
Right, so the resolution is whether you want to do it this year, like the federal government, or do you want to do it next year, like the state, or do you not want to do it at all?
I would think this, it's, there's a very high likelihood of the state that it'll get approved and move it back to twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, but, I mean, I'm fine. Do we want to do a motion in a second? Then we can discuss in more depth if we want to.
I, I'll make a motion to enact the Juneteenth, uh, holiday for the city of Taylor's Falls to be, uh, begin in twenty twenty-three, which would be June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and, uh, annually thereafter.
I'll second.
All right, Troy, second. Do we have any further discussion?
Well, I would not be opposed to making it a paid holiday because not in the motion.
I think in, in our resolution, it said paid, so, okay, um, yeah. So it would, it would be a paid holiday starting this year. Any other questions? And this would go into the equivalent as well. For future. Okay, all those in favor of passing, uh, Juneteenth, uh, to go into effect in twenty twenty-three for the city of Taylor's Falls as a paid holiday, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
What is the resolution number? We, since you've already created it.
Two, two, three, dash, oh.
Do, do dash one then.
Okay.
Thank you. One. Thank you for that.
Okay, um, we have, the next on the agenda are the city hall roof proposals. As you can see, we have buckets and water coming in our roof. If you haven't seen it yet, um, ignore them. We, we don't have anything to vote on. I just wanted to get it on the agenda and let everybody know that we are looking at it. We did have, uh, somebody come up. I had, uh, somebody I used to actually work with, um, come up and we got up and found a couple weeks right away. Uh, there was still less snow out last Friday when we were standing, or Thursday, we were standing on the roof, but we found a few leaks. Um, they came back on Saturday this week and went through the entire roof and they're putting a proposal together for either repair or replace. So we're getting two from this person. Um, and then I know Public Works is working on getting one or two more they had, um, coming up um, to give us the same, um, proposals. And so that's where we're at. We, I haven't seen him yet. He called me today asking me if I could give him the roof, the building plans. And so Mary's helping me try to get those over to him so they can use that in there.
Single ply roof of that vintage, it's past my expectancy.
Yeah.
I wouldn't be surprised that the recommendation will come back to request.
When we were standing out there, he said, he also said that it's a forty-five millimeter and he said he wouldn't go anything less than a sixty-five. Um, he said he needed a thicker, but he said that one would be that. The walls look nice. Um, sorry, I don't mean to ignore you guys. I'm looking this way the whole time. Um, the walls look nice on the roof itself, but we did find, um, cuts and, um, just weren't there. Nothing huge damaging or anything up there, not, no storm damage or anything that we saw, but they'll have more for us, so. And he did call today to remind me that he needs the information on building, so. Any, any questions, discussions? If anybody knows anybody, um, you know, get involved or, um.
I'll talk about Kevin.
It'd be good to get some more, uh, more bids than just a couple for this because I got a feeling it's going to be kind of expensive.
Yeah, thank you for moving forward on that. Everybody was working on it because of, so it'd be nice to get it fixed, right, Mary? I mean, fixed well, at least we don't, we had a really rough winter, but, um, I think hopefully we can correct this now so going forward. Even while winter will be a problem.
You have a problem?
Need a hard hat.
Okay, um, let's move on. Um, we had, uh, some sewer issues. There's some information in the packet, but, uh, Lee, would you like to, or Tim, if you'd like to let us know what happened?
I'm sewered out. What are you doing?
Yeah. Uh, back in that last snowstorm, I'm going down thirty-seven there at, uh, main line backed up. And the guys caught it right away and, uh, company come out for it to clean it. So we need to remind everybody not to put diapers down your toilets. And those wavy rags that they say are biodegradable, they're not. So everybody can remember not to do that. But we did, by doing that, uh, I got the guys to look, we actually have a sewer cleaning machine in the shed that had been running a while. And they, they changed the oil and it got up and running. Pretty nice machine, so we'll do that stuff ourselves here.
One of the things Kevin did request, um, if we could send out a communication to all our households that have water. He just got one coincidentally in, in Shaker. Um, and it speaks to everything that you shouldn't put down your, your drains. Um, I, I think it's a good idea.
Yep.
I don't think we can educate enough on, on a situation like that. That location, from what I understand, is especially prone to those type of backups where we have some, we have, the other one has a grate, downtown has a grate that we empty out where.
Yep.
It catches it. This one doesn't have that.
Right.
So I, I don't know. I, I would assume we can make that determination within the department and just have Mary help us communicate that, but, um, we can't put it with the water bill because they're just carts, but it would be a mayhem. That would be okay.
Yeah, I think it's rated.
Lee, what was the cost? It was about thirteen hundred dollars?
Yeah, I think so for the guy to come out on Saturday, which actually is pretty cheap.
It was. I think three hundred today.
Yeah.
For me alone, so.
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll just work with Mary to get the, that man out.
Thank you.
All right, um, next on the agenda will be, um, and I, I put this in here, uh, it's a, I want to discuss with everybody, um, an email policy on how we're going to handle emails coming forward. Um, I, I want to make sure that nobody gets missed, um, as far as emails go. Um, so I, I contacted the lead just to see if they had any best practices. Unfortunately, they came back saying that the, there's nothing in any of the handbooks. They kind of gave us a couple of options. Um, and one would be to each of us come with, uh, any emails we get, just kind of a rundown of what, what we have, um, you know, a brief of the emails we receive. And then the other one, they, uh, adopt a policy that no emails will be read and citizens may need to come to the meeting. That was from the lead. Those are the two options they gave us. Um, I kind of did some fact digging on this because I'm like, how can cities not have, email's been around for way too long to not have policies? And a few of them I found, one of them, they had a deadline for all emails to be put into the city clerk by, uh, I think it was like four P M. Um, the day before the packets come out and then those emails are all included in the packet. And then another one had it, uh, where it was, uh, the clerk read it. And it's, I'm not trying to make you do any more work, Mary, but, um, I, I just, those are the ideas that I've seen. You know, how we can handle it to make sure there's nobody missed or, you know, what we feel. So that's why I put it in here just for us to have a discussion. You know, we don't need to make a decision right now if we don't want to. If we want to, as a council, go out and look at other ideas. You know, I just want to get it in our heads.
Well, a lot of emails do come into city hall. You just have to, you know, look at your e, your, or personal emails, I mean. And, and not all of them, I would think, are, you know, council worthy. However, if a council person gets a specific email, then I think it would be, you know, a good idea to have that council person bring that to the city council. Either summarize it or, you know, read it out loud, check.
I agree.
Now, I have a, I guess a legal question. Uh, if a citizen sends an email just to one council member that, uh, that council member reads during a meeting, isn't that public information?
Yes, I mean, when, when you have email on those kinds of things, unless there's a reason, uh, to exclude it, uh, it's public data.
And therefore it could be requested?
It could. I, you have to be careful though that you're not disclosing, for example, uh, addresses or a few other things. It should be reviewed for redaction if necessary. But anything that comes in, anything that comes in is presumed public.
So I assume that, that anything in my email is public information and if somebody wanted to see all my fun and exciting emails, they certainly could. But are we talking about in lieu of coming to our meeting and filling out the form and speaking to us? Is that really what we're talking about though?
Yeah, yeah, not just taking the emails, but I, I think anybody that sends them, we should have them all read it or brief on them all or put them in the packet. I'm just trying to think because I don't think all email, you know. If I only get three, Larry gets one, you get none. You know, you guys have no clue what we're getting. So how, how do we get that? Ahead of time? What do we want to do ahead of time? Because I, I know there's, there's certain individuals that just, they can't make it. They're working at night. Um, they don't feel comfortable coming, whatever it is, but I want to, I, I want to make sure that we're taking all of it into consideration.
I, I guess if, if somebody, if a citizen sends in an email and they want to address the council with that email, then I would be in favor of that email and, and they're open about that. They want, they want the council to pay attention to this email and this, this opinion. Then it should go in the packet so every council member sees it. It's, it's part of, it's part of the correspondence, it's part of the agenda, it's part of that, you know, the meeting's agenda.
But anything that's got anonymous on it, I'm not going to accept. Anything that's got anonymous on it. If you can't come in and tell your name or have your name addressed on it, it's not worth reading.
I, I think that's a, I think that's a point to be considered and I think in that case, we would encourage, that's why we have, that's why we went so far to get these public forms back, you know, in every meeting that we have, so that, that's your opportunity to come in and speak to us. I, I would agree with you on that, Nick.
Well, oftentimes the distribution is a B C C, so you really can't see who else was included. So it might have been all the entire council. Or it may not have been.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Can I, can I avail myself an opportunity to throw another word?
I was going to ask anything we do as far as if somebody wants to remain anonymous, I mean.
Well, that's public data too. And I mean, you know, if somebody wants to inquire about that kind of thing at some point, they could. But, but at this point, I want to just raise caution, which I'm sure I don't need to, but I'm going anyway, um, which is, if you have your own personal computer email address, I would discourage you from using it, um, as a, uh, means of communication. Even if somebody knows you or has known you for years and sends you a personal email, uh, I would suggest that you encourage them. One, you forward it onto your correct, your correct the city email address. And two, uh, let the public know that if you are in contact, it should be through your official email. And, uh, the reason for that, uh, not seeing it happen is that people get used to very comfortably using their own personal email. And all of a sudden, there's a lawsuit or something, they're discovering their, all of their personal email is, is subject to discovery, which can be awkward, especially if you've got business information on there or anything like that. So again, I'm just availances. We're talking about, uh, email policy. I just want to make sure that that, that point is clear.
Uh, just one more. Would you, uh, would you discourage the use, I would think, but I guess, would you discourage a council member using the B C C, the blind carbon copy, just in general?
It depends on the circumstances, but, but, you know, again, what you choose to do on the official, um, email on your computer is entirely up to you. It's your call, you know? And you can, you can judge yourself if that's a good idea. And I just really strongly discourage you from doing anything like that on your own personal emails.
Does that include, um, all like social media too? Because, I mean, we've had conversations here where I've, I've gotten pinged from somebody I don't even know. And I don't open them up, but I can see on my phone and they're asking about how they get in touch with me up here or whatnot. Um, and I, if I do open it, I direct them just to call Mary and she'll get them.
I would, yes, I would encourage you not to do anything substantive over your, uh, over your cell phones, for example, on text, because that's discomplable too. And I'm not saying.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, it can be very awkward if your personal phone suddenly ends up in the hands of who knows who for whatever reason and you have to get a phone basically while somebody else gets to go through all of your personal information.
I don't think so.
Um, I mean, I don't know if we're even ready to make an exception. I think, you know, we probably should take time to develop as a team what we want to do and we have some information, um, you know. Fritz helped us with some. I think we should not do anything more than just have this discussion tonight and.
Are you back in a month?
Yeah, take a month and come up with a, a couple of good ideas and then we can share that.
I, I, that's great. I will make a motion to postpone it at a definite, uh, date and time. I'm making a decision on, on emails, um, to be, to be read. That's it, helps me.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on postponing to a definite time of the email policy discussion? All right, hearing none, uh, all in favor of that postponing it to definite time, say aye.
Aye.
All right, next is, uh, Public Works Generator for Hold On. I saw that in the packet. I'm going to let Tim and Lee speak about that that Kevin sent over to us.
Come to find out, the, uh, that last storm, snowstorm and whatever, the gentleman that been doing the service on the generators for us remembered that the parts never got put into the generator. So he ran over and started the one out by the pond out there to make sure everything kept going. So that was very nice of him. So it never got, it never got fixed. Cause he never heard back. And of course it can't. Doesn't say what, when the.
You know, it, it, it just said, I think it was last year and it just is under, basically when I read it, the generator is underpowered.
Yeah, it needs a bigger gas line going to the generator and the other one, the other one needed a, something to do with a control module.
And the ignition.
Yeah, because it would heat up and just needs to be replaced, so. Yeah, that's what happened there, but the guy lives over in Shaker, super nice, came running over middle of the night and got the generator going, so.
Has this all been done or is?
No, there's a proposal.
Proposal.
Yeah. Yep, and they'll get it scheduled.
And then also any value.
Yeah.
And well, from what I understood, though, we're getting another proposal to upsize the fuel line.
Oh, is it? Okay.
This proposal is just for the.
Oh, fixing the controller, okay.
And we're getting another proposal to upsize the L P line.
Okay.
Going in to the, um, I get them for the well, I think, one of the wells.
Oh, that could be.
I think it was for one of the wells.
Okay.
Okay, well, I need a motion to either approve or not approve the control module and the battery replacement for the workstation.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Alright, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Larry, we're going to get aye before 8:30. Um, okay, so number seven is the community center. Update sheriff's contract pricing for police supervision. We met with the sheriff's department and they, they raised their rates. And even though we adopted rates a couple of months ago, we adopted them. And so the people that have already filled out their applications, that have already rented the, the community center, we're not going to up that. But we just need to make sure that we pass the current overtime rate that the sheriff's department's offering, or charging. Then we're also changing how we've been doing it in the past. In the past, we've kind of been a liaison between the sheriff's department. If there's any alcohol being served, we would contact them, we would take payment and then go from there. And what they presented to us and asked us is that sheriff's department would like to handle it all. So if anybody wants to have a wedding or anything up there that involves alcohol, we're going to let them contact the sheriff's department or any other office, you know, that we are using in the area, obviously it's the sheriff's department. And they would take care of it together. They would build up direct, and we're just kind of getting, getting away from that. This isn't taking away the need for sheriff's department or a police officer being there if there is alcohol. It's just basically giving them the job and not making Mary and Michelle have to do it, so.
It will also prevent change in the contract each year as it goes up, so.
Yeah, so we don't have to monitor that.
Okay, just one comment if I can on page, it's two or three, but it looks like we are striking out if alcohol is being served. You will also need to provide a check for police supervision at the time the key is obtained. Now, if we're striking that out, that means we are removing that, that clause, is that correct? Is that what we're adopting tonight as well? So we're no longer requiring law enforcement to be present if alcohol is served.
No, that's incorrect. We are requiring law enforcement if alcohol is being served. However, they're not paying the city they are going directly to, and they have to prove to us that they have contact with the sheriff.
There's a checkbox on the application that indicates, if I remember right, whether or not alcohol is being served, and then there's some instructions on.
I believe so.
Because on bullet point three, I believe, it speaks to that. In the opening, um, application procedure. Those seeking the use of intoxicating beverages must indicate this request at the time of application. And then it says that they have to contact the sheriff's office.
Okay. Got it. The reason I bring that up is that is another point that when we met with the sheriff's department, the sheriff, sergeant, and the deputies, that, that is something that we really want to consider for their benefit. When we require that sheriff or deputy or sergeant or law enforcement be there, that actually takes them off, off the street. That requires that they have somebody else replace them for doing the regular tour that they're having, or the regular route that they're having that night. So, and it also cuts down the response time of the deputy that is here if he actually gets called to something else. He's not out, he's not, although he's not moving around. So I guess what I'm, at this point, I'm just bringing that up, that's a discussion we do have coming in the future as well. Is why we are really requiring, what's our purpose? Why did we, why are we requiring law enforcement to be there just because alcohol is being served? So that'll be coming up in the future.
Yeah, because some, some venues require that you have somebody to serve liquor, who has a liquor license, which I think negates the need for law enforcement, so.
And they, just to, just to piggyback on what Troy said, they, he used several areas here that use them every weekend all summer long. And he said eventually there's going to be, they, they don't have nothing apart, and so that's what the sheriff just, so they're just planting the seed so we know it's coming. Eventually they're going to say, sorry, we can't help you anymore, and then we're going to have to figure out what we're going to do, so.
So what is the actual fee?
It was eighty, it went to eighty-six dollars an hour. I think we had sixty.
Sixty dollars?
Yeah, sixty forty cents. And we didn't even know. That's the thing, they just said it in conversation, we're like, oh, wait, and then Mary found out because they called, because we had somebody wanting to rent it.
Correct.
And we were only charging them the sixty dollars and forty cents of the sheriff's department, because it's like, no, we're not charging them, so.
I think too, one of the conversations I had was having the sheriff actually is going to protect our historic building down there. It only takes one person to ruin something, and so he was also acknowledged that was a good idea to have a sheriff there if there was alcohol being served. But going forward, if they make change, I can understand that.
Could I also suggest that we, because it sounds like there's some concern from the sheriff's office. Will we bring this back to a future meeting and talk about the whole process?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe the next meeting or at the latest, the meeting after that.
Do we, should we pass this now if we can, and then I would agree.
Go through the whole thing.
Right.
And I think that kind of goes into the fee schedule too. I mean, we can do this and change the, we want. Yeah, most definitely.
I will assume passage, I guess, I shouldn't have said that, but I will make a motion that we approve the Taylor's Falls Memorial Community Center rental application as, as updated, that we see here.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, well, we are done. Preliminary agenda for our next meeting, we're going to have a next meeting in May. It'll be the first, or the regular meeting date in May, so. We're going to give, unless something comes up and we need to have a, a meeting before that, we're going to give the office and the council people a break. We have a lot to put back on the next packet though, so, you know, hopefully we can do that, and is there any?
I just have one, I'm sorry, Mary.
Yeah?
Go ahead. We have our local board of adjusters and equalization, appeal, appeal and equalization meeting on Thursday at 6:00 PM. We do need a quorum there so we can, so we can do business. This will be the meeting where the citizens can come up and appeal their assessment values. And we will also have representatives from the county in the assessment office here.
I will be at that one, so that's, I will be gone, but you guys should still have a forum. Hello?
Thursday, April 13th at 6:00 PM.
Is there any liaison reports happening on the committees?
No.
No more vacations. We do have three applications, so that have been updated. Mary and Michelle have been working really hard at getting those, so if you need them, they have them now. You can email them out or pick them up, and then we have a website and we'll get those on there too. Alright, I need a motion to adjourn.
So who?
Do I have a second? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.